Take a little stretch break. We'll get to our city council position number five. Before we start that council position, we're gonna probably get done a little before eight, so I'm hoping the candidates maybe will stick around and answer some of your questions one-on-one when you're done, because we got a lot of questions in a limited amount of time, so...
Just give us three.
Well, I'm not gonna give you three after everyone else only got two. Sorry, sorry Leonard.
Yeah, I can't...
So, council position number five, Brian Wall and Leonard French. And by lottery drawing, Mr. Wall, you go first, and you have three minutes for your opening remarks.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. It's a great opportunity to get a chance to see everybody and talk a little about our priorities, thoughts for direction for the city. As you mentioned, I'm Brian Wall. I'm running to keep Mount Lake Terrace moving forward. After serving on the planning commission for 14 years, I was honored to have been appointed to the city council just last year, and had the opportunity to, during my term in the planning commission, really had the opportunity to listen to you, the public, and hear what your thoughts were, and develop plans based on what your vision was for the community and how we grow, and how to shape that growth into how we wanted to see and vision our community for the future. And so, based on that, of course, we passed our comprehensive plan, and since then adopted our town center plan as well, and sub-area plans, and put together a number of different strategies, sustainability strategies, economic vitality strategies, and a number of other things to help us move forward. And so, at this point, I'm looking forward now, with serving on the council, to implementing those plans, and really striving to achieve those dreams that we've developed over time. So, I'm looking forward to working with you, and have been excited to hear your thoughts, and continue as I'm out there working in our neighborhoods and talking to our neighbors, hearing what your thoughts are, or what you'd like to see. I'm hearing a lot of excitement about where we're going and how we're developing our community, and so, I just look forward to continuing to serve and move the city in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. French?
I'm Leonard French. For those of you who don't know me, I live up by the Evergreen Playfield where my wife and I bought our home 40 years ago. I graduated from Cedar Way in 61, Terrace Island in 67, so I've been here pretty much mine forever. For 13 seasons, I worked as an operating engineer principally in the oil fields up in Alaska until my body gave out and I had to find a new way to make a living. So, going back to the university, I've got a master's degree in business and finance and real estate, and opened my own independent real estate analysis firm around town here. I coached Little League and administered basketball program for Mr. Smith and MTYA in the middle of the 80s, and was appointed and served one term on the board of adjustment from 2002 to 2006. I'm really happy to see so many folks here tonight. It's Monday night and football's on, and one of my friends told me that normal people will not be here because they'll be watching football. I'm here to tell you I love football, but I don't consider people who look at public policy on Monday nights as being abnormal, or I wouldn't be trying to get a position where I'll be, Monday nights, the council meetings, pretty regular, it's four to six years. I'm rooting for the opportunity to represent you, because I believe everyone in town deserves a voice on the city council. And it's clear to me, despite what I've heard from other council people here tonight, and particularly the mayor, that not everyone in this town is regularly represented. There was a petition in 2006 with 1,324 signatures, basically asking for something different out of the town center plan, and it's thrown in the round file. So, I believe everyone deserves to have someone on council, and if I'm elected, there will be another voice. Councilman Richards, in response to the Mount Lake Terrace interview of Brian Wall and myself, suggested that everyone look at the record to see who would have a better vision and understanding of the Mount Lake Terrace policy. It may surprise him and the rest of the council, but I totally agree. I think everyone should do that, and do it quickly before you vote. I urge everyone to do that research, start with the three council meetings that I referenced in my work, and go beyond the reassuring tones and the conceptual promises. Look closely at our past and current council finances, the evolution of the city all over the last five years, and finally, at the council's actions and statements in all of those regards. I'm comfortable, if you do that work, that my candidacy will succeed for position five. And finally, I've enjoyed the campaign and meeting everybody, and I'm just glad to see so many folks here.
Thank you. Okay, the first question, and Mr. Wall, you will go first. What is your vision for the best use of the Ballter Clubhouse in the future? Please address, also, please address your position on the senior center moving to the Ballter Clubhouse.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's a great question. It's a great opportunity, I think, for our community and for the senior center to have that available and move into the clubhouse. I think it's for a variety of reasons. One, and probably most importantly, is allowing the seniors to move into the clubhouse and use that as their senior center, really allows the senior center to expand their programs and provide more services to our senior community. So, I think that's the number one and most important reason. I think that also, by having the seniors in the clubhouse, that also allows us the opportunity for them to manage that, rather than have the city to manage that facility. I think also having the senior center there allows a lot of improvements to the senior center that wouldn't be afforded to the city otherwise, if we were to continue to manage it. So, I think there's a lot of opportunity. I'm excited. I think it solves some other problems and other issues for the community, and I'm excited to see that as a possibility, as we're continuing to negotiate the terms and to make that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. French, did you need me to repeat that question?
No.
Okay.
During the last spring's campaign, it came to me, there were a number of people when they found the golf course was closed, saying, "Why don't we take the senior center portion and put it down there?" I don't remember who it was that raised it, but it sounded like a really good idea, and I started championing it. Right now, though, I don't think that's the best use for the clubhouse. We do not know that our revenues are going to go up enough despite the projections. Pay for the $500,000 or so odd dollars of rent, we're going to have to pay in addition to paying back the money for the bond, for the on-anticipation note for the current rent we already have. So, I think the best use of the clubhouse would be, as a man named Dale Jeremiah lived down there, has suggested, use the clubhouse partially for administrative space, if you need, put modulars there, put people at the city in the public works building, if we have space, and maybe rent small spaces around town. It'll save us a million and a half dollars over the next three years, and I find that a much more amenable solution until we know we have the revenues necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. French, you will go first on this question, I believe. And I've combined two questions, because I promised the youngest member of our audience tonight that I would ask his question, so...
Sure.
He's 11 years old. He's back towards the back of the room. So, his question is, and I'm gonna paraphrase it a little bit, it's gonna be a two-part question, because I've got two similar questions.
Just one 11-year-old question?
One 11-year-old question and one older 60-year-old question. So, that means it'll be well-balanced.
Thirty-five and a half.
Right, yeah, 35-and-a-half-year-old question. So, the first part of the question is, "Please address your position on more development in the city," and the second half of the question is, "What are your feelings about green belts and tree protection?" So, it's really sort of two questions about development, green belts...
Can I have one minute for both?
Okay, just because I did this, I'll give you guys a minute and a half, because I promised this young man I would ask his question.
Which one is his?
His is the one about development.
About green belt?
No, his is the one about future development.
Okay.
Second part of the question was...
And just, what does it say exactly?
He wants to know why you don't want more development, but I said I wouldn't single out candidates, but...
Oh.
But now you know. So, the question is, "How do you feel about development and green belts?"
It's not true, and I don't believe the 11-year-old came up with that by himself, but I'm glad to answer it for him. It's not true that I do come not for more development. I was for, and have been for, since the mid-'90s, continued three-story development downtown, which was allowed under the old zoning code. And there was three-story buildings that were constructed, so we now have five-story apartments. I'm against expanding too much of what economic development has become, is a code word for more density, and I believe that the neighborhoods that are gonna be most impacted by that should be conferred with before that, as soon as stretched down 56th and across 36th to meet some regional agenda.
Rebel, "rebel" and "tree protection" was the other part of that question. I think you've got some time.
I'm not a tree hugger at heart. I don't cut down trees gratuitously. I know a lot of people who want to protect trees, and I'm not sure if there's a city policy on it. If there is, it doesn't seem to be being administered, at least uniformly, as far as, like, see, I ran into one person, a lot next to him was completely cut down, and he said the city told him that that was part of the new development mode. I know that there's a house that Jerry's working on over here around 52nd, and every tree was taken off that land. I don't think it looks as good, but I'm not quite sure that the city has the power or a policy right now to do anything about it. If I owned the land, I wouldn't cut all the trees down, because I like the trees.
Okay, Mr. Wall, so, I'll try to get this in. This is about future development and about protection of trees and green belts.
Great, thank you. First, let's start with protecting the trees and green belts. I do, obviously, I think one of the things we have going for us in Mount Lake Terrace here is the environment and the quality of life that we have, the parks that we enjoy, and the trees and the greenery that we have. So, we certainly want to continue to protect that. We do have some policies in place for replacement of the trees when trees come down, for new development. I think it's worth taking another look and figuring out what additional policies may be necessary to protect our tree cover, but that's certainly, it is a pride and joy that we have in Mount Lake Terrace and want to protect that. Economic development, obviously, I'm very much in favor of seeing our community grow and prosper with new development, new economic development, bringing more jobs, new jobs into the community. I think we have a lot of, we've seen a lot of growth over the years, even during the downturn in the economy, because of the policies we've laid, which have brought, which are, we're still seeing opportunities come into the city. As the economy starts to turn around and picks up again, I think we're gonna see a lot more growth and exciting opportunities here in the city, things like the Diamond Knock Brewery, and the, you know, and Main Street really coming alive, providing new opportunities for business and retail and services for our community. I think a lot of that has to do with, again, the groundwork we've laid through the policies we put in place, but the next steps are, and what we're seeing and doing now, is putting in place and making the investments through infrastructure, putting the roads, water, sewer, and utilities in place to help encourage more growth, and reaching out to the development community and the businesses to let them know about the opportunities we have, marketing with them, to let them know about the opportunities they have here in Mount Lake Terrace. So, we're gonna continue to do that, and I think we're gonna continue to see a lot of exciting new things happen here in Mount Lake Terrace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see here. Mr. Wall went first on the opening remarks. Mr. French, you will go first on closing remarks, and you have two minutes for closing remarks.
Well, first of all, what I just heard is, to what economic development has accomplished, it's greatly exaggerated. I read where my candidate I'm running against here has said, "We've had exceptional economic growth over the last few years." I guess I just don't see it. I wish we had it. A lot of what you hear is not necessarily true, just because people in city council or anywhere else in government say it. You should go look for yourself and see what's growing around you and what you see, and take what you see to be what you believe. Finally, I'd like to remind voters that you encourage what you tolerate, and if you tolerate a council which only responds to the input of citizens who already believe what the council believes, you're going to have an insular and unresponsive council, and that's what we've got now. If you tolerate a council which allows regional ideals to overpower your neighbor's concerns, you're encouraging a less responsive council. If we tolerate a council whose belief in the righteousness of their agenda blinds them to the agenda's financial impacts, which is what I believe is going on right now in this debate over the rent of the new city hall, or interim city hall, you're encouraged to continue with overspending. It's not true we've been running in the black, we've been using our cash cushion. If it is not already, that will eventually imperil the delivery of the city services, that's infrastructure and public safety, the most important things we all live for and that we consider the core of the city's function. And I really appreciate seeing all your faces here. Can I note to Monday, Andy?
Thank you. Mr. Wall, you have two minutes to close.
Thank you. Well, I agree. It is great to see you guys here and have the opportunity to talk about our priorities and the direction we're going. I think we do have some clear choices tonight, and I hope you take into consideration the opportunity to talk with us further, beyond just tonight, about the issues, and do look into the city policies and what we've done. And I think, as I'm out there talking with my neighbors, going door-to-door, talking to folks about what they're seeing, they're feeling the excitement, they're seeing the excitement, and so, that's certainly the direction I want to continue. I want to continue working with you to bring that about. My priority is our fiscal responsibility, ensuring that we do continue with a performance-based, priority-driven budget that is sustainable, and I think we've done that, we've balanced the budget every single year, we do not run deficits, in fact, we're not allowed to by law, by state law. So, it is something that we will continue working on, and through a lean government, and prioritizing to fund the services that are important, and that's another important aspect of what we need to be doing, is not only through a fiscally responsible budget, but we need to continue delivering quality city services, obviously, public safety, our police, fire, emergency services, our most important service that the city can provide and does provide, and certainly, our pride and joy, our recreational programs, the things that we offer to our community, from our kids all the way to our senior citizens, is something we need to continue delivering the quality services there and maintaining our parks and our roads. And so, those are some of the things that we want to continue working on, certainly are gonna continue to be my priorities, and we do, I think, leave our responsibility. Through, you know, through the years, we've listened to you, the citizens, and while there are some that may disagree with the direction of the city, the overall vast majority of what I'm seeing out there, working with the public, talking with the members, through our surveys and through our, everything else, and through our outreach, through our city happenings, we are doing a great job, and I look forward to continue moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you both. Our next two candidates are for Snohomish County Council. Snohomish County Council District Four encompasses the city of Mount Lake Terrace, north up to the Mill Creek area and kind of west over into Briar, and is one of five council districts within the county that all of you get to vote on who represents you in the county government. And it is a partisan, unlike the city council, is a partisan position, and Terry Ryan is running as a Democrat, and Robert Reedy is running as a Republican. You'll be the next two candidates to speak. And you don't have to answer questions about the Mount Lake Terrace City Hall. So, the first candidate to give opening remarks is Mr. Ryan, and Mr. Ryan, you have three minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you.
Should be on.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Mill Creek, excuse me, the Mount Lake Terrace Senior Center, and also the First Baptist Church for sponsoring this candidate forum. Just a quick background about myself. My wife and I have been married for 29 years. We have four great kids, and I care deeply about Snohomish County. I have 30 years' experience in the private sector, 17 years of public service on the Mill Creek City Council, and serving on a plethora of boards and committees throughout Snohomish County, including 17 years on the joint fire board between Fire District Seven and Mill Creek City Council, or City, 13 years on Snohomish County Tomorrow, which is a land use committee up in Snohomish County. I was elected co-chair of that committee in 2012. I've also served on various regional committees in Snohomish County during that time. Our accomplishments include revitalizing Mill Creek through economic development. We got the Mill Creek Town Center built, and I personally attracted several key tenants in the center, including the UW bookstore. We built safe, livable neighborhoods, we respected the environment, protected our streams and stream banks, we built parks, trails, ballfields, and our first senior center in the history of the city of Mill Creek. We also got our fire station built, and we positioned Mill Creek to withstand the economic downturn. I'm looking forward to bringing my experience, dedication, and leadership to Snohomish County through the Snohomish County Council. Thank you.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes, thank you for being here. I wish this thing that we're going through tonight could have happened two years ago. A lot of questions would have been answered, because I got yelled at, and I wasn't even elected for the car tabs. I'm like, "Well, who would you vote for?" But I've lived in Mount Lake Terrace for more than 50 years. We, with my parents, it was just about two years old. I went to Melody Hill Elementary, that is now the former, the elementary's being torn When you were talking about how we're gonna be facing in this city, an aging population, this is gonna be not only in the city, but the county and the state and throughout America. I was with the census since 1995, and I can tell you that it's very accurate counting the, when they do something like surveys, they're right on top of it. They know what they're doing, and census takers are very well-trained, so we can't escape the information we're learning. But perhaps society is calling senior citizen a little too early in life now. Since living a long and prosperous life is far more popular than dying early, this is gonna continue. But how many people, I'll be pushing 60 next summer, I don't feel like a doddering old man. I mean, I can't play football anymore. Okay, fine, but that doesn't mean I'm ready for the cemetery. So, why, maybe we need to be pushing that age from 55 and 60 and 65 into 75 and 80, and the miracles of Mother Nudson is gonna make us live longer and longer and longer, and we need to have people who are old actually participate in, be productive members of society, way into the 70s and 80s. It's a societal change, and I would rather get older, I think. We have many, many issues to look in this county. It's part of it is what's happening in other parts of America. I can explain that a little bit later. One of the things, I had a job working for an environmental company for a while, many of our customers were in Detroit. A woman calls up and says, "Come over and get my appliances." I said, "Well, where did you, where did you hear about us?" She says, "Oh, they tore down the neighborhood behind me." I said, "Oh, they tore down the house behind you, so did the neighborhood. They took out 81 houses in the neighborhood behind me, 124 in another neighborhood. Who knows how many more and more? Detroit is a dying city. What happens if Lindsey Graham is a better senator and better at his job than Maria Campwell and Patty Murray? And I know all three of those people. It's not an unlikely. And Boeing moves to South Carolina. What are we gonna do? We can't make on that Boeing. We have to diversify our economy, what's happening in Mount Lake Terrace, and the town center is a good example of what they can do locally."
Good timing. First question, and first question goes to Mr. Ryan, and then Mr. Reedy, you will answer the same question in a second. Currently, the county general fund distributes about $560,000 among 13 senior centers across the county. With continuing declines in the general fund and higher demands for law and justice, how would you address a long-term funding solution for services to aging adults in our county?
That's a great question, and what I would do is, I think it just comes down to priorities, what's important to people. And I've door-bellied over 15,000 homes, and I've heard a lot from a lot of people. So, I would make sure that is one of the priorities. I don't think it's law and justice or seniors, I think it's both. We just have to prioritize it, and I would not, I would not be in favor of cutting that amount that is distributed to seniors in any way.
Mr. Reedy?
Oh, thank you. One of the things about priorities, if we're gonna have more and more people come in, and I have a degree of law and justice, and a certain percentage of the population is gonna have some sort of criminal activity in their, in their lives, and we have to have a jail. Jail's a whole lot different than prison, so we have to have the Snohomish County jail. If you have an increasing population, you're gonna have to have a bigger jail, because the numbers are just there, unless you find some alternative to punishment. One of the things I'd like to see is, the county council, if you say you're gonna do something about senior citizens, let's go ask the seniors what we can do. They've been around a long time, they have an IQ above their shoe size, it's time the government started responding to the people. And if the county commissioners have to go out to those county, to those senior citizen centers, that's what you're getting paid for.
Thank you. Second question, and Mr. Reedy, you will go first, and this is a broad question, and for a little bit of background, I want you to address both the funding for community transit and for the county, and this has to do with transportation, but please remember that community transit is one of the sort of county-wide transportation issues. And the question is very broad, and Mr. Reedy, you'll have one minute to answer this. How should the county address transportation issues to reduce congestion in the future?
Last Thursday, someone challenged me to go to meet, it was this 5:00 in the evening, and I took from Highway 99 and went down the road to get to, on the other side of 128. Oh, what a mess, that took me an hour, literally, to go that little distance. I was in Atlanta, just in, doing something else, when they were beginning a MART program, though you couldn't, but I don't know how many Seattle's in one Atlanta, but as Seattle's getting to, and the surrounding area's getting to be a bigger and bigger city, I think light rail may not be a bad idea. They're starting to do things now. I know for many of us, it's gonna be past our working years, but we can't keep kicking the issue down the road, we gotta keep working with it.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, did you need me to repeat that question?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, though. So, regarding transportation, it's very clear, we have to invest in our infrastructure. We need to have more capacity. We also have to expand our transit and make it easier and more accessible to more citizens, make it simple to use, not complicated. And also, we have to work on long-term planning. I think that we've worked on short-term planning far too long. So, we have to have a short, medium, and long-term plan for transportation in the community, and we have to stick with it, and that's what I intend to do.
Thank you. Okay, and closing remarks, let's see, Mr. Ryan first, Mr. Reedy, you have two minutes closing remarks.
The many issues that are facing us not only face us here in our district, but as part of Snohomish County, it's a larger program. Up north, they're talking about building a dam in the Stillaglamish River, that's just a beautiful part of the world, to generate electricity, because they're not allowed to have that kind of electricity here, they're gonna sell it to California, who's gonna up the price, because they're broke down there, and sell it back to us. Guess who we have to pay that bill? There are other ways of generating electricity that could happen right here and stay right here. One of those things is, is being built all over the nation, there's 84 of them now, are waste-to-energy plants. Now, when I was on the Mount Lake Terrace Energy Board, people, this was back in the early 80s, people were complaining that it might foul off the air, but technology has advanced so far since then, in many things, including the technology of having clean emissions. One of the issues is coming up real quick. I got invited to more events in King County in the early summer than I did in Snohomish County, because the people in Shoreline are very concerned about what's gonna happen with Point Wells. As part of Point Wells, the old Chevron Oil, Standard Oil Dock, part of it's in King County, part of it's Snohomish County, Shoreline is really concerned that they're gonna be stuck with all the fees and all the money and all the police with a road improvement, Richmond Beach Way, and Snohomish County is gonna put all the money in their satchel and off they go with it without any responsibility. That's irresponsible, that part of it. Snohomish County is gonna take a piece of the action, they have a piece of the responsibility as well. That is the best thing. But I can tell you now, no matter what you dream, what you hope, what you wanna build, if people don't have a good job to go to every morning, nothing's gonna work, because they're not gonna be paying any taxes to make anything pay off. And that's what we need, jobs.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you. I think we can have more jobs through economic development, and I've built a 17-year career around that. I've been 17 years' successful municipal experience and have a distinguished record of accomplishments, having served Snohomish County with honesty and integrity for the entire 17 years. I will continue... and integrity for the entire 17 years. I will continue to serve our residents and work for the betterment of all of Snohomish County. I respectfully ask for your vote in the upcoming election. By the way, I'm going to stay afterwards if you'd like me to elaborate on anything I've said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you both for coming tonight. Before we wrap up, I want to remind the candidates to please take your campaign materials home with you. The church does not support candidates or propositions. The materials will be recycled if you leave them here. So they'll be put to good use in our recycling program. With that, I would invite you to stick around for a few minutes and have some more cookies and refreshments and maybe get a chance to ask the candidates a few one-on-one questions. And that wraps up our evening. I want to thank all of the candidates for coming tonight. Thank you. See, the president of the board of directors for the senior center is here. He said I had to give a commercial. Friday night is a senior center's annual primary rib of craft feed. It's $30 a person. It's a great meal. We have great musical entertainment for the evening, including the Mount Lake High School, Mount Lake Terrace High School Jazz Band. And so a good opportunity to come out, have a great time, lots of food, lots of entertainment, silent auction, raffle, and the mayor will be there because he's providing all the craft for the, for the event. So please, if you want tickets or want to buy a table, you can see me or Sean Richards after we conclude tonight. Thank you.